Good morning and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Friday, February 25th, 2022. We have minutes to begin with. Second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. That takes us to item number three, which is reports. And there is an update on property value trends. And Mr. Ray is going to speak to that. So, Mr. Ray, when we're ready.
Thank you, Chair and Board Committee. I have a short PowerPoint presentation just to walk you through some updates. So this is really just building off of the report that I presented to the board in November 2021. The result of which was was a recommendation that be brought back to it to be the whole meeting for further in-depth discussion. But I wanted to present you with some some updated data since then. So to begin with, I just I thought it would be smart to just remind everyone, walk them through exactly how the property tax system and the allocation of taxes works for the regional district. So there's really kind of three main cuts to it. So the first being setting the budget. That's the part we control. We can determine what the budget's going to look like. And based on that budget, how many how the total amount of property taxes that we need to collect. And that, of course, isn't, you know, one big pool of taxes. It's it's 115 or so different services, each with a different pattern of participants and who's paying the tax. And so it's really a cumulative number of those many different services, but that's the part we control. And then the next piece generally set out in our service establishment bylaws is is the allocation for those areas participating in each service. Allocation of those property taxes to each of those areas. And it's generally, for the most part, based on converted assessment, relative converted assessment. And then, once you get it allocated to a particular area, the T N R D, we don't collect the property taxes ourselves, but the member municipalities collect them in their jurisdictions on our behalf. And the province collects it in the unincorporated areas for us. And they do the work of breaking it down. How much do we need to collect from the residential property class, from business, from utilities, and so on? And that I'm going to walk you through as well, just so you can see how it works. So here's the comparison, the the 2021 assessment, the converted assessment. This is information I usually show you every year when I'm presenting the budget. So 2021 compared to the the data we have so far for 2022. And you can see this is this would be based on a service if everyone in the T N R D were participating in it, like public libraries or film commission. And generally, the allocation of taxes is broken down based on
Can't hear anything.
I move the mic a little closer. Does that help? Can you hear me now? Okay, I'll continue. So you know, it adds up to 100%. And what happens is each year as the assessment data is released, the the relative proportions between the different areas shift slightly. So you can see in 2021, Kamloops, for example, the converted assessment works out to 64.448% of the total. In 2022, it's 64.522. So there's a slight increase, which means that if we were collecting the same amount of taxes we were in 2021, Kamloops will be paying just a little bit more. And so all the ones over on the right-hand column in black all saw a little bit of an increase in the proportion that they represented the total. The ones in red represent a slight decrease. It's still going to work out to a net zero sum game. It's still going to add up to 100%. So you can see, for example, Area P was one of the areas that had the largest
Anyone hear me?
Yes, Steve. Can you hear me, Steve?
Can you hear us from the boardroom, Steve?
Okay. I'll continue. So Area P at a point 2% increase. They were 3.22% of the total in 2021. Now the 3.422%. So they had one of the larger increases, which means, again, all the other things being equal, if we were collecting the same amount of tax, it would be a little bit more allocated to Area P, a little bit less allocated to Area B, which had one of the larger decreases in their percentage. It always shifts a little bit every year, which is why even if taxes stay flat, some areas will still see tax increases, not areas will see tax decreases. So the next cut, once you've allocated the taxes to a particular area, is to look at the breakdown. And if I go back one slide, you'll see City of Merit for 2022, the converted assessments, 188, 761, 776. So I'm taking that off this report I get from B C Assessment. And you can see it circled there in red where that converted assessment is the breakdown for each property class. And you can see just to the right of it, the conversion amount. So you see the gross assessment under the column says total. Converted assessment for residential is 10% of the gross for utilities. It's 35% of the gross and so on. Those those are the percentages set by the province to get from gross assessment to converted assessment. So once I have that, this was an example, and I used merit simply because it was one of the larger shifts.
Can't hear anything. Still can't.
So in in this chart, you'll see for City of Merit, for example, the gross assessment where it says actual value, the conversion percentages to get the converted assessment again. And then you see the breakdown where it says percentage share, what percentage each of those property classes represents of the converted assessment. So just like where we're allocating taxes to City of Kamloops or Area P or City of Merit.
It is. Okay.
So what you see here is the percentages on the percentage share that each property class represents of the total converted assessment in the City of Merit. And for us, that's what drives how much tax we're going to collect from each class. So with the municipality, it works a little differently. With the municipality, they can play with that tax rate to kind of keep the proportionality the same. So if they're collecting just, for example, 60% of the property tax from residential and 40% from other classes. And the residential property values go up as they have been over the last few years. They can manipulate it a little bit so they can still keep that 60%, 40% proportionality. I don't have that ability because the rules are slightly different for regional districts. So for 2022, residential class represents 64.82% of the total converted assessment in the City of Merit. So if I was collecting a million dollars from the City of Merit, and that's not the actual tax requisition, but that's a nice round figure to use for illustration purposes. I'd be collecting, or rather, the city would be collecting on our behalf, $648,163 out of that million from the residential property owners. And I've also added in here, you can see the number of properties listed by the B C Assessment reports, 3,055 residential properties. If I work out the average value of a residential class, which is really just taking the gross value divided by the number of properties for 2022, works out to an average value of 400,485. And if I apply the Class One tax rate, the average tax Class One taxpayer would be paying in 2022. If we were collecting a million dollars, it would be $212.18. Now, in 2021, exact same, but if you look at the residential portion, it was 62.77% as opposed to 64.82. So if taxes stayed flat, if we were still collecting a million dollars the year before, residential would have been paying 627,677 out of a million, not 648. So there's a there's an increase to the amount of tax that we would need to collect from residential, even though the total taxes we're collecting hasn't changed. And that's purely a mathematical result of the converted assessment calculation and the way that the property tax process has been created for us. I don't control any of that. So so just as a reminder, you do the first cut there. So some areas are going to see increases allocated to each area. And then they may also see increases if you're a residential taxpayer, because not only would be the City of Merit be allocated a larger amount of the tax, even if we didn't increase the tax. And then the residential taxpayers are paying a larger piece of that again. So it can be a bit of a double whammy there. This slide, and I'll hurry through this a little bit. This was just to kind of give you a bit of a snapshot of of the change. It's about a 30% increase in residential converted assessment versus a less than 20% increase in the other classes. And that's what, you know, part of the point of of these reports I've been preparing put before the board is is to help you understand how these market changes in property values are impacting the property taxes that they're having to pay. So again, snapshot of comparison, if if I was collecting a million dollars in the City of Merit, 2021 versus 2022, more tax roughly 20,486 more would be coming from the residential sector. And we'd be collecting less from most of the other property classes, a little bit more from major industries, it works out. But roughly, you know, half of that increase in residential is coming out of the utility class that's paying less and coming out of the business class that's paying less. Now, if I took the T N R D as a whole, if I get away from just using City of Merit as an example, for this one, I basically said, here's here's the proportionality for the T N R D as a whole. And again, this isn't really accurate because we don't have one big service that everyone pays into. It's it's accumulation of as many different services, some of which some municipalities pay into, others that they don't. But for illustrative purposes, I used the total tax requisition from 2021 excluding local services. So ones that generally most areas are paying into. And in 2021, for the T N R D as a whole, cumulatively, residential represented about 67% of the converted assessment. In 2022, it's closer to 70%. So if we were collecting exactly the same tax as in 2021, you could see there's, you know, a significant about 4% lift coming out of the residential sector and and decreases in the other sectors. And again, I don't have any control over that. I set the budget or you set the budget when you approve it. I make recommendations about what taxes we need to support the services. And the rest of this is a mathematical exercise to arrive at who pays. And it's all designed to tax property values and the trend in the last few years, and it's been accelerating in recent years, is the trend is that values all concentrating into the residential property class. So I think we had a question.
Director Faiber.
Could you please explain to me, okay, now that we've had the floods and if all the disasters we've had, are these assessments face, including that, taking that into account? Or are these assessments based on as if they have a house and everything still?
So these 2022 assessment data that I'm giving you is based on what they call a completed role, which is released in January. Then B C Assessment goes through an appeals process in February. And at the end of March, they release what they call the revised role, which takes into account any appeals. What I understand from what B C Assessment has said publicly is the the completed role that was published in January, they did their best to take into account changes in property classes that were adversely affected because of the wildfires, because they still had a little bit of time to deal with that. They usually are setting their values as a work they've done in, you know, by July. But when there's significant events in in July and August, they'll do their best to try and take that into account. The floods happened so late in the year. My understanding is that this data that I have doesn't take any of that into account yet. And what they're doing is saying, if you believe your property values are overvalued, now that you've had flood damage, go through the appeals process to present information to B C Assessment in February. Have them look at that and revalue your property. So that should be reflected in the revised role that I don't have yet. It's not released yet. It'll come out. Actually, it never comes out before the budget comes before the board. But I do take that into account with the actual tax requisition. So I present the information to the board based on the data I have available. And legislatively, the board is required to adopt a budget before the end of March. Usually, the revised role comes out just the tail end, the very last few days of March. I update all of my calculations to take that into account before we send out the tax requisitions to the municipalities or to the province. So it would be taken into account with the final tax requisition this year, as long as it went through the appeals process.
So in the end, it could affect our taxes.
It could. Yeah, yeah.
For the whole area.
Well, if you think about that whole cut of allocating taxes to the various areas of the T N R D, if one area goes down significantly, and I can give you an example, if I backtrack here a couple of slides, Village of Litton, you see, has a decrease. That's because the fires were taken into effect into account with their property values. So part of what you see with those So part of what you see with those changes is, you know, some of that increase or decrease, some of that is property values increasing in some areas and therefore pulling taxes, migrating taxes away from other areas towards them. Typically, in the past, as Sun Peaks has grown faster than the rest of the T N R D, you've seen existing taxes migrate to Sun Peaks where they're now responsible for paying them. But the reverse can be true too. So if there's an area that has a decrease in property values, some of that responsibility for the taxes migrates back to the other areas. Because it's really based on the proportionate amount of the total column, right? Does that answer your question? Yeah. So it's not really set in stone until the budget's adopted and that revised role gets taken into account. And even then, the following year, I get a final tally of any other adjustments that might have been made after, even after taxes were requisitioned. And if there's any significant changes with what the final tally for two thousand and twenty-one was, we can make adjustments to the two thousand and twenty-three taxes to account for that, to make sure everything's been fairly done.
Director Christopherson.
Yeah, just a question regarding making your appeals. That's always done in January. And in Merritt's case, most of those people weren't even, even there. It's too late for them to appeal now, is it not?
I'm not sure the exact deadlines B C assessment has.
Usually, it's by the end of January. And a lot of people still had no idea what was happening.
Yeah.
My question is, it's probably too late for, well, it's too late for individuals to appeal. But is, is there still the opportunity for the city to make that case that we still don't know what the poverty extent is?
Yeah. And unfortunately, that's really a question for B C assessment. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But was it dependent on individuals appealing?
If they wanted to take it into account for the two thousand and twenty-two taxes, that would be the only opportunity they'd really have to provide that information to B C assessment. Because B C assessments work on doing their own assessments that already been completed. And it was too late in the year for them to go out and do more work and meet their deadlines.
So we'll have to handle it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll try to quickly finish this up to leave room for discussion. But this is just some updated information. Then a chart I've shown you in the past, you can see between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. This, this represents, again, the proportion, the percentage on the left-hand axis there of the total converted assessment in the T N R D that's represented by residential class one, a longer term trend. So you can see from two thousand and ten on, you know, it dipped a little bit, but it's been climbing. And between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, it's getting even more steep. This is the cumulative change since two thousand and fifteen. If you, if you look back at this one, two thousand and fifteen is kind of where bottomed out and started to climb again. So cumulatively, the converted value for residential has increased about ninety-four percent between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-two. And the percentages are a little bit misleading because you can see you can have a high percentage for a low number, like Managed Forest or Class Seven, eighty-eight percent increase, but it's only a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So it's, it's really insignificant in the grand scheme of things. Business, which is the second most, you know, largest dollar value for converted assessment, only increased by forty-two percent or about half as much as residential. And clearly, the, the concentration of values in residential and more and more every year. Here's the same information in a, in a chart using dollar values rather than it's a percentage. So again, just updating what I presented in November. And you can see from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, again, that, that upward curve has just gone into another vertical realm altogether. It's just, you know, it's on a whole different level than it has been. There's been some increase, you know, the, the second line down, the blue line is business class six. You can see some increase there and a little bit of increase in the utility. But, you know, clearly, the majority of the value and more and more is concentrated in residential. So then you would look at that and say, okay, well, if you've got this big increase in residential and the assessed value, well, how much of that is new growth? How much of that is new, new construction? Because typically, if you're adding new properties to the mix, that has the impact of diluting the taxes. If you have, you know, say, ten taxpayers in a service in one year and twelve the next year, then technically, you could collect the same amount of tax, but everyone would pay a little bit less individually.
Mr. Ray, I think Director Rice has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. And it was from back on the appeal process. I wanted to just make a note of Director Chris Paulerson's concern. The deadline was the thirty-first of January. However, the, if you're impacted in your assessments, let the constituents know that if your flood impacted, there's a special line, a special number to call, Jamie has that number. And the deadline for that assessment appeal has been extended to March fifteenth. So time is running out in just a couple of weeks or more. And, but there is for flood victims, if your assessment's been impacted. Jamie gave me the number and I passed it on because there's a few people down here. But I know it's a little late, but I was trying to get your attention to answer Director Christopherson's question. So they have made a provision for the assessments. It's a direct line for flood, flood-only impacted properties. Thank you.
Thanks for that information, Director Rice.
So in terms of new growth, certainly, there has been some new growth during this period of time. But it's been fairly insignificant compared to just the increases in market value. So this chart shows the cumulative impacts of each. So the orange bars are the, the value increases since two thousand and fifteen due to, purely due to market forces. I get a report from B C assessment each year that breaks it down. Here's the change in assessment for each area in each class. This is how much was what they call non-market change, which is generally new construction, but it could also be moving from one class to another or things of that nature versus just basically increases in market value based on, on sales data they have. So clearly, the orange greatly outweighs the blue. And so the impact has been pushing more and more of the taxes onto residential without that new growth to offset that necessarily. And just again, another update for another piece of information. This is the M L S Home Price Index for Kamloops and District for a two-story, single-family dwelling. So specific to the Kamloops and District area, this is their benchmark price, so dollar values, basically over the last ten years from two thousand and twelve onward. And you can see it goes up and down a little bit. You know, frankly, by two thousand and fifteen, you're still at the same point, really, as you started in two thousand and twelve. But it starts ticking off from there. And you can see how steep it's getting. And even since the last time I showed you data in November, it's continuing to increase. That's the same chart, a little larger to make it easier to see. So, you know, in terms of sales, this was just another snapshot from the Kamloops and District Real Estate Association. They publish a sales performance stats press release. This is from January twenty-two, twenty-two. And this was really just something I showed you in November. This is just an update that kind of shows you the, the increase in the average prices that they're seeing through sales. And it's not just Kamloops, it's sort of throughout the area you see increases. And this is twenty, you know, twenty-one compared to two thousand and twenty cumulative for the year. So it might not necessarily take into account in Meritan area, for example, if there was a downturn right at the end of the year. But just to show you, you know, there's been increases across the board throughout the regional district, really. So short-term versus longer-term trend since two thousand and fifteen, most residential taxpayers have actually seen annual taxes decrease on average unless new services were added. Despite the growing values and despite the migration of the taxes to the residential sector. And that's because the T N R D since two thousand and fifteen has generally consistently been lowering the taxes in total that we're collecting. As we've seen cost savings mainly in the area of solid waste. You recall, we, we entered into some five-year contracts for operations and stuff that had a lower cost to us than previously. Well, we've paid that on to the taxpayer by lowering taxes rather than just putting it into our reserves. But now the trend is reversing. Our costs are beginning to grow again, and the taxes are needed to support them properly, which means, you know, expectation, and you saw that with the provisional budget in December, an expected increase in property taxes compared to two thousand and twenty-one. But if we look at it, you know, slightly longer term, there's the, the red bar at the top. That's the property taxes in total that we collected in two thousand and fifteen. If we just left it there flat through to two thousand and twenty-two, that's what we would have collected. The blue bar represents what we actually collected. So generally, consistently, you know, between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one, it works out to about one point three million dollars less that we were collecting in two thousand and twenty-one than we were in two thousand and fifteen. The two thousand and twenty-two figures from the provisional budget, because I don't have a final figure yet for the final budget that's coming next month. But you can, and I expect it to be a little bit less than that. But you can see it's, it's kind of reversing, but we're still lower than we were in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen. The number of services has generally stayed fairly consistent during this period, although there's been some additional local services added. And I'm thinking of like the five fire departments we took over in, in two thousand and nineteen were added. But even then, our, our tax requisition was down lower than it was previous to that.
Director Elliott.
Thank you, Master Chair. Were in this requisition thing, do you add debt load?
Well, generally, those are collected by parcel taxes. This is property taxes and parcel taxes work differently.
Well, yes, I'm aware of parcel taxes. But, but we, do we have a debt load that would be required just on property taxes? Other than maybe the hospital?
No, all of our debt is currently held in any, some of our utility services for water services. And so that debt is being paid each year. We collect parcel taxes from the residents just in that utility service. So yes, there is a bit of a tax increase for those particular properties where they're paying additional parcel taxes that they weren't paying before.
But the overall is.
Yeah.
Is not.
Yeah. We don't, we don't collect property taxes and there's no, there's no debt on any of our general services outside of utilities.
Okay, thank you.
However, we have been drawing down our reserves quite significantly. So cumulative impact, this is just a quick slide. If we'd left our taxes flat from what we were collecting in two thousand and fifteen and just put the difference into reserves into savings rather than passing it on to the taxpayer, we would have almost four point five million dollars more in the bank than we do today. So that's, that's money that the taxpayers have instead of us. And just again, a bit of a longer-term snapshot, when I bring the budget to you, usually, I usually show a calculation that shows for each area what the average residential value is and what the average taxes are and what the change is this year compared to last year. And I wanted to update a little bit, give you a bit of that longer-term trend. So not only have the total taxes we're collecting gone down, but looking at the residential sector in particular, many of the areas have seen decreases in the taxes that those residential taxpayers are paying. And why is that? Because even though the value has been migrating and concentrating more and more in residential, we've lowered our taxes sufficiently to offset that up until this point. And, and some of that, again, is migration from one area to another. So if I look at this table, for instance, Kamloops, which doesn't participate and pay into our solid waste management service, wouldn't have benefited from any cost savings that we reduced those budgets by. In, in two thousand and fifteen, and this is again, a very simple calculation. What's the total gross assessment for the class one sector that B C assessment gives me, divided by the number of properties they give me? The average value in two thousand and fifteen was three hundred and thirty-nine, four hundred and thirty-two. Now, and I'm using two thousand and twenty-one simply because I don't have really the taxes calculated yet for two thousand and twenty-two. But just looking at two thousand and twenty-one, the average value was four hundred and eighty, six hundred and forty-two. So it increased about forty-two percent. The average taxes paid by the average valued property in Kamloops in two thousand and fifteen was about a hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is just T N R D taxes, not municipal taxes or provincial taxes. Hundred and twenty-five dollars now in two thousand and twenty-one, it was about a hundred and thirty-four. So an increase of about nine dollars over six years, which works out on average to about one point two percent increase per year. So basically, lower than inflation. Sun Peaks, on the other hand, had a much larger increase percentage-wise in the average value of their properties. And their property taxes increased from about three hundred and seventy-two in two thousand and fifteen to four hundred and forty-five in two thousand and twenty-one. So that works out to about three point two nine percent per year. Well, some of that is because, and keeping in mind, by two thousand and twenty-one, we'd significantly lowered the taxes we were collecting. So some of that is, is taxes migrating from Barrier or Clearwater or Merritt or what have you to Sun Peaks as they took on a larger piece of the total converted assessment for the T N R D. But many areas between the lowering of taxes in total and some of that migration saw a decrease in their taxes since two thousand and fifteen. And if you look at the electoral areas, it's much the same. The outlier there really is area N. And when I looked at that previously, there were one or two new services added in. So that increase in taxes really was paying for services in two thousand and twenty-one that they weren't paying for in two thousand and twenty. Or sorry, in two thousand and fifteen. So if we're just looking at over slightly longer trend, and my fear is if we just look at, you know, two thousand and twenty-two, when it comes to you versus two thousand and twenty-one, it's going to look like a steep increase. But if we're looking at it over the longer trend, even with that increase, there's still going to be some areas that are paying less than they were in two thousand and fifteen on average. And there's a real and growing need to increase taxes to fund the T N R D services properly. Our infrastructure is aging. You know, we need to do more work to, you know, even this building, it needs a new roof. We've got, you know, proposed project that's going to cost about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new chiller as part of our heating and cooling system. There's demand for more infrastructure. You know, we've been looking at a new library branch. There's rebuilding the library and Litton repairs and renovations to this building, fire halls.
Director Watson.
Thank you. Have, have we already started paying more taxes for the new library? The proposed new library?
No.
Thank you.
No, that's still in the planning. Right now, what we have is a little bit of money in their reserves that in the budget has been allowed for looking at acquiring a piece of land, the initial planning costs to get us to a point where we might be prepared to apply for grants, things of that nature. But frankly, we don't have the money in the bank for it. Moving forward, that project's going to be absolutely contingent on us receiving some significant government grants. And to leverage those grants, we'd have to go out to the people and ask for permission to borrow money. And until we borrow that money and construct the library, we wouldn't be collecting taxes to pay for that debt.
Thank you.
And the people haven't had a chance to have a word on that yet.
Director Roden.
Have we still got money in the bank to do the proposed renovations at the Ashcroft branch, which still haven't started?
Yes, that's, that's still, it was built into the two thousand and twenty-one budget. And so that money is being rolled forward into the two thousand and twenty-two budget to make sure that project happens. But my point is, as we, as our infrastructure age, it requires money to bring it, you know, up to modern standards. And there's, you know, demands for new infrastructure. And once you add more stuff, that costs more money. We have a government grant that's going to pay a hundred percent for a new water treatment plant in Pritchard. But once we have a new water treatment plant in Pritchard. But once we have a new water treatment plant in Pritchard, we need staff to operate it. We need, you know, to pay for heating and electricity and all those things that we're not incurring now. And there's rising workloads demanding additional staff resources. And I'd like to personally say thank you very much for supporting the additional staff position yesterday for finance, because it's it's not a short-term need. It truly is a long-term need. And as I said, we've been draining our savings. We have an operating reserve in our general administration that at the beginning of 2020 was about 2.2 million. I predict by the end of this year, it's going to be closer to 600,000. Most of the money we have in our library reserves is dedicated to, again, just the preliminary look at at acquiring land for another branch and and planning. The only other reserve we have with any substantial money in it is the solid waste management reserve, which we've got a financial plan to draw down over roughly a 10-year period to about half of what it is today. So most of it's already spoken for. When it comes to, you know, running an E O C in the summer, when we have fires and floods. Maybe I'll just finish my thought. We get reimbursed from E M B C for those costs, but we front the cash flow until we get reimbursed. So where's that cash coming from? It's from these reserves.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ray. My understanding is this with operating reserves, you should be running at a level of between 12 to 25% to be comfortable for future needs. Now, given that you said that we depleted them to the extent that we have, what percentage are we sitting at? And what are we going to do to try to recover those?
Well, the percentage, I haven't calculated it precisely, but it's much lower than that. Last time I calculated it is when it was about the 2.2 million mark. And there's no real sort of specific guidance or benchmark for where your reserves should be. G F O A years ago published a best practice that suggests just for contingencies, you shouldn't be looking at at least, you know, two months of your annual operating budget, which works out to about 16%. And last time I looked at what we had in sort of general administration, it was about 16%. And now we're looking at, you know, we have less than a third of that. So part of the need is to regrow those reserves so that we've, you know, we've got adequate contingency and and setting ourselves up for future needs. The only way for us to do that is one of two ways, cut costs or increase taxes. And we've been cutting costs, and I don't foresee us having a lot of wiggle room to keep doing that.
Director Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe time to float an idea. From the information that Mr. Ray has presented, we're going to need to put taxes up somewhere over the next two to three years. Is that better? Okay, thank you. I'm just wondering if it's not a good, we also, I think we have to go out to the people every once in a while to tell them, you know, to get input from them. Maybe it's time to go out to our communities and ask them the question is, what do regional districts do? What do they do? And what do you want them to do? And get some feedback and and build a budget on that, including billing reserves. And then we have a penchant here. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. Every time a new, a new thing comes off, comes along, we jump on it. And that costs money and I would like us to be able to get some input from communities. On, you know, from that perspective, are we doing the right thing? Do you want less? And and get some feedback from communities. And I had no problem going out to them and asking that. And I'm just wondering if how such an idea would float and to Mr. Ray is, could we do that this summer?
That is actually one of the number one things on my priority list that and, you know, addressing the the policy improvements and such that came out of the B D O report. And that was one of the number one needs identified for that new position in finance is, you know, frankly, I I truly believe we need to do more public consultation around the budget. It's been a resource issue. And along with COVID and and that sort of thing in recent years. And that's one of the chief things I identified, that having that extra position with finance, a more high-level management level position would be someone rather than me trying to do some of that off the side of my desk, we could have someone who could who could have some dedicated time to that.
I I like to, it's just an idea I'm floating, and this is obviously a reasonably good place to to make that suggestion. And I wouldn't mind hearing some feedback from other directors on, is that a direction we should go? Thank you.
Your Director Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was two years ago that Doug and I sat in this boardroom for some three, four hours expecting people to come and tell us what they thought of the budget. We got one person. And so I'm thinking that if you're going to do that kind of thing, it's going to have to be in the community that have a vested interest in what happens within their community, not just a global.
Director Rothenberger?
Thanks, Chair. I agree with both with what Director Quinn and and Director Elliott have said. I think it's an excellent idea to do that. I also know as as Director Elliott has said, that in the past, we've tried, but the the way we've tried it is to centralize it here and expect people to come in. And the reason we've done that is just we don't have, haven't had the resources to go out into the communities. Because you look at all the various communities and that we would go to, it would take a tremendous amount of time and resources. If we can figure out a way of doing that, then absolutely we should do that. It's been a deficiency, I think, in our budget process for a long time, not not because we wanted it that way, but because that's the way it had to be. So possibly the new finance position will help help with that, and we can get something going, because it'd be terrific if we could.
Mr. Ray, did you want to comment before before Director Schaefer?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, it's actually a requirement that we do public consultation for our budget. And I can point out, you know, the number of things that we we have relied upon to meet that requirement in the past, you know, when we've updated our solid waste management plan, that's a 10-year plan, and there was a lot of work put into public consultation around that. Well, that's about a third of our budget. In the past, there's been public consultation around our library services, fire departments, utilities. But it tends to be kind of looking at a service and not the budget as a whole. And one of the ways I'm I'm planning to help address some of what we're talking about is is making more use of our our new communications department and social media. And it's a matter of kind of putting together some content and trying to engage people. And certainly some meetings in communities would be, it's probably timely to do that as well. But I think that we've got some tools at our disposal that we can, we can do more outreach than we could before, and we should be doing that without necessarily it being as problematic as it was in the past. But it still takes time to create content and engage.
Thank you. I have Director Schaefer, Director Rain and Director Quinn. Director Schaefer?
I would just like to say that I think it's a great idea to come to the communities, but when you get into, like in my area, I've got five different little sets of communities. And most times, and when the regional district comes, they go to Clearwater and expect everybody to come into Clearwater. Well, the people in my region don't think they should have to wait Clearwater. Like, if you want to talk with, come to Bayden, come to Virchow and come to Blackpool and all those places, you know, which is going to be possible. But I think it's an excellent idea.
To Director Rain?
Thank you. I I did want to kind of follow up from Director Dutie's conversation, but given the subject right now, I would say that you certainly can use surveys. Our community, we've used Survey Monkey to good effect, and we've had high participation rates. So that might be an easier way to get get feedback. The the issue I wanted to really talk about was this whole issue of the increases in the budget. I mean, the budget is going to go up by, or the the amount of revenue collected from tax requisitions is proposed to go up over a million dollars. So it's about four and a half percent increase. That's a substantial amount. I I noted that in the November 18th report, there was languages and future tax increases will depend on the level of reserves achieved, service level adjustments, and the amount of new growth. And I, well, Mr. Ray has spoken to those just recently. I I think it's incumbent upon us to receive a report prior to the approval of the budget that shows us exactly the detailed analysis for each reserve account balance and the forecast of anticipated needs over the next five years. It's great to talk, I mean, it's interesting, the reports, we've drained the reserves. There's language in there recklessly reducing taxes. You know, even this dilution that Mr. Ray speaks about, when we have new growth, we're not diluting taxpayers' taxes. We we are lowering lowering their proportion of the total taxes because there are new people joining it. But I just find some of the language we have here is all kind of saying like the taxpayers should expect to pay, just expect to pay. We need to look at the detailed analysis of these reserve accounts. We need to look at the services that we're providing and where those services are going to go up above an inflationary increase with an explanation of why and how. Then this board can make a proper decision as to how much money should be collected from taxpayers next year. I I really do object to this idea that taxes just have to go up, taxes have to go up. Yeah, we were able to lower taxes because of the costs of the solid waste systems went down. But all of a sudden, we say, well, we lowered people's taxes. Now we got to, we got to raise them. We don't have to raise anybody's taxes unless we have services that people are going to find to be worthwhile. Or we're in a financial situation where we can't support the activities we're doing. But we haven't seen that. I mean, this is a great detailed explanation of how the system works, and I appreciate that explanation. But the real crunch for us as directors is how much more money do we need to raise next year and why? And that has, I would hope that the board would want to see a a presentation of those details before we approve a budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rain. Did you wish to comment on that, Mr. Ray, or or not?
Well, I guess the point that I'm trying to get across here, I I don't disagree, but I'm trying to help directors understand what the market forces at play are that are are driving taxes. It's not, it's not necessarily a question of raising or lowering taxes in total. It's the fact that even even if taxes stayed flat, residential taxpayers, because of the way this collection system operates, end up having more of the tax burden on them. And and that's a mathematical reality, really. And that's what I hope to get across. So when it comes to, you know, that, and and I am saying that, you know, as I'm developing the 2022 budget, I do see, you know, lower surpluses to fund, you know, carry forward money to to spend in 2022, increases in costs, you know, our payroll goes up every year. We have collective agreements that dictate that. We have, you know, last year, four additional staff that the board approved, and those taxes are coming into play this year. You know, there are real increases in costs. And and less money in the bank at the beginning of the year than we've had previously.
Supplementary, if I may. Yeah, that's all great. But it still comes down to the biggest factor that would change all of this is how much money are we going to requisition taxpayers for? And that's the issue. We we've gone into unbelievable detail on how this all changes with the changing real estate prices. I'd just like to see the same kind of detail on our reserve accounts, our forecasted anticipated needs from those reserve accounts over the next few years and the service level increases. We need that same analysis so that we can make a proper decision on a budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Rain. I have Director Quinn, Director Watson, Director Smith, Director Polderman and Director Christian. So Director Quinn?
Thank you. I I just wanted to float it as an idea that seems to have generated some discussion, which is great. I I still think that we should be in some way having a chat with our taxpayers on what the necessities of increasing taxes are. The easiest way, of course, to lower taxes is to dump services. Some of them we can't, some we can adjust, some we can get rid of. And that's kind of the idea I was having a look at is, let's make sure people know this is why your tax bill is X number of dollars, because you want this service or that service or the other service, along with the fact, these are the services we have to provide under provincial legislation. And that was all, I'm glad it's generated some some discussion. I look forward to see where we're going from there. Thank you. And oh, with to what Director Ring's comment about survey monkeys. I'm not talking about having a meeting in every single community in the regional district. That's not practical. But part of the reason that we don't get turnout of those meetings is because we centralized it here. As Director Elliott said, only one person showed up. Well, nobody's going to come in from Spencer's Bridge or Litten or Blue River or Clearwater or up in the Clinton area for that kind of a meeting, but they might participate in the survey or attend a local meeting up there. That was where I was going with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Watson.
Thank you, kind of a two-parter. Last night, the Village of Litten had a town hall meeting online. Director Polderman, did that work out? And if it does, couldn't we do town hall meetings online?
Whether it worked out or not, I'm yet to find out. We've been having them. Many of the people that you saw on that town hall were actually not from the village of Litten.
Director Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this might be kind of more of a general question for people that have a little bit more history. My question is, is there anybody that knows when the last time B C assessments actually reviewed their own assessment structure? And one of the reasons that that I asked that question is because the District of Logan Lake actually sent a resolution to U B C M last year, I believe it was, asking them to do that review because there was an organization that came to us requesting land to put in, actually, it was windmills. And their question was about energy efficient projects and what tax structure was around those types of projects. So I'm just asking the question because I think it might be timely for assessments, B C assessments themselves to even do some sort of a review if that hasn't been done any time in the last while.
Mr. Ray? I don't have an answer to that. I do know if, even if you just look at those conversion percentages, you know, those were set by the province, how we get from gross assessment, converted assessment, they were they were set decades ago, and they haven't changed. So I I I don't know about the inner workings of B C assessment, but in in terms of how this tax process and and the mathematical aspects of it hasn't changed in decades.
Thanks, Director Polderman.
When, you know, we're talking about going out to our taxpayers, and while we may not be able to go to every community in one year, maybe we could visit every community over a number of years. And I think a really vital part of that visit would be to explain what services visit would be to explain what services the T N R D actually provides. And we should seek a a response on what services they want. But I don't think the question of whether taxes need to go up or down is a question for the taxpayer because I've never met a taxpayer who's told me that their taxes need to go up.
I think we all share that experience.
Maybe I can just quickly support you on that. I think the idea would be to ask them, you know, talk to them about the services they're receiving and whether they're happy with them. Whether they think that they're too expensive and are there areas that we could cut to lower taxes, or if they're happy with them and they feel that the cost is appropriate. That's generally the tact I've seen other local governments follow. It's more a question of, you know, satisfaction with the service level. Do you want the service level to increase? Would you like more service or would you like less service? And if you know more service is going to come at a higher price, what's more important to you?
Thank you. Director Christian.
Thank you, Chair Gillis. I guess first of all, I'm looking at my screen and I see Director Blackwell's hand is a different color than mine. Mine appears to be yellow, which I'm hoping is not a jaundice issue. But anyway, just an observation. I want to circle back to Director Rain and his questions about the rationale for any increases. And I think part of Doug's response really twigged something in my mind. And that is throughout the course of the year, we make decisions as a board which have an impact in a subsequent year's tax rate, but we forget about it. And I think it would be helpful for the budget document to include those additional tax measures that we have made by virtue of recommendations that we have supported. And in some cases, we add a staff member, but they don't come for, you know, part of the year. So it's just a little bit in the year we do it. And then the following year, it's kind of a wallop and we forget that we actually had approved that fifteen months ago. So I think that that would help us, I think, rationalize in our own mind that we make some decisions. And there are some consequences of these decisions down the road. And I guess my final point would be to Director Bolderman's suggestion about, you know, making a tour of the region. And at one time, prior to all of the latest controversy, we used to go out, I thought, every year or two, member municipalities in particular, and provide an update about the service levels provided by the regional district and sort of a meet and greet with the staff in those municipalities. And I think that was a good practice. And I would hope that after we get back on track, we would continue to do that. And part of that, of course, would be a budget update.
Thanks, Director Christian. And I think that's a good suggestion. I think it was COVID probably that interfered with that program. I have Director Blackwell and then Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As to Director Christian, the reason that your hand is yellow is between you and your liver. That's your conversation. Two points on topic, Mr. Ray, I absolutely agree with your position on reserves. I think, as pointed out last time you did an update on this, that needs to be addressed. I don't think we have enough spare fuel in the tank to do the things that we need to do. I don't see that as additional acts for taxation, asks for taxation. That's just restoring what should have been there previously. And Clearwater is in the same position. Second, on consultation, Clearwater does that a couple of different ways. Combined Zoom and in-person meetings with basically what Doug is doing right now for the public. We get more interest for the cheese crackers and free fruit that the seven citizens get to take home. And the counselors get to take home at those meetings within our own town than we do from the public. It's, I still see it as required thing that we need to do, but it does not get you any sort of fair sample of the public feelings on taxation. The only time we've broken from that is when we combine it with something else, which is something that is either controversial, like a water park or an expansion to our sports facility. Sports facilities are usually really good because it attracts a lot of attention. Or do yourself a container bylaw, shipping container bylaw, and you'll get half the town out. And that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Director Blackwell, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought that I would like to lighten the load around here. I sat in a meeting in nineteen sixty-seven that said the government would now provide the rural areas of British Columbia with all the services that were required to keep them involved at the same level as the municipality. In nineteen sixty-seven, they took over the planning areas or regional districts were to take over planning so that there wasn't a whole bunch of cottages and shacks and all those kind of things. And when I look at, basically, at that time, there was an uproar about the fact that the rural people were going to be dictated to. And now, when you go out to the rural people, what they want is services. They want their utilities, they want their libraries, they want all these things. And now I look around my area in the last six months. We've got people coming up from the lower mainland and buying the properties and not know that they have a septic tank and not know that they have a water system that they have to deal with, not somebody else. So over the last, I guess, sixteen the changes in regional districts is incredible. And I think it, to my mind, it is just the reverse of what they started. But anyway, I think you need to have that background to be good to see where you're going with the taxes.
Thank you, Director Duddy.
Thank you. I'll just keep this brief, and it's along the lines of the public consultation discussion that's been going on. And I remember when I was first on council, we had had a public consultation session down at the Sandman Center. And we had four people show up for that evening. Now, in subsequent meetings, we've had many more than that. But I remember, you know, mentioning to a director that it was pretty abysmal turnout. And he said, well, that's what tends to happen. Things are kind of boring for people. They don't really want to get invested in it. And I says, I know how you can get people out here. And he says, what's that? And I says, you post that you're going to have a ten percent tax increase, you'll fill this room. So the point I'm making is that you have to make it personal. It is personal to some degree, but if you actually make people understand how their pocketbook is going to be affected, they're going to want to find out why.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ray, I think you can continue now.
I'm pretty much at the end. Anyway, this was just basically a couple of final slides, basically making the point that we, you know, we haven't been maintaining those base taxes that, you know, the strategy that we've talked about is to maintain sort of base taxes and take advantage where we have new growth, unexpected revenues and surpluses to grow those reserves. And I'm not suggesting we would grow our reserves, you know, immediately in one fell swoop. We'd be looking at a multi-year gradual, you know, contributions under those reserves to restore them to a higher level. But, you know, we haven't been maintaining those base taxes. They have been decreasing year after year. And, you know, frankly, we're at a point, I can't really find any additional cost savings this year to further decrease them and offset cost increases otherwise. But I wanted to have the board be informed and understand the impact of these market forces and how they're affecting residential taxpayers in particular. Because that's what the board tends to focus on when we talk about the budget. It's not whether taxes in total are going up or down. It's the impact on the residential taxpayers that tends to be looked at and taken into account. And so there's going to be some tax increase that is completely beyond my control simply because of that shift in the tax burden as a mathematical reality of the way the system works. So I think, you know, we need to just keep that in mind. And, you know, the idea being that, you know, I'll try to break that out and say, you know, if we're looking at a tax increase in twenty twenty-two, how much of that would have happened anyway, even if taxes had stayed flat? And how much of that is actually a result of us increasing taxes? So that you can see those factors separately and not just one big lump change. That's really all I had.
Thank you. I think Director Quinn, did you have anything further on this topic?
Yeah, just a supplementary on that. Thank you very much for that discussion. I appreciate that. And to Director Watson, don't forget there are areas in our regional district that don't have access to online stuff still. We're getting there, but we're not there yet. And I think most important is we have to make the effort to get out to the people. Whether or not they take advantage of it is their decision. But we have, not only do we have to seem to be doing it, but actually doing it. So again, thank you for that discussion. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We have a recommendation with respect to the report from Mr. Ray. No, second, is there any discussion, further discussion? Seeing not all in favor? Opposed, if any? Does he know what opposed? That's very, thank you. That takes us to three point two, the remuneration bylaw. And again, Mr. Ray.
I was just asking if we were going to take a break. I was asking if we are going to take a break.
Yes, I thought we'd probably take a break at ten thirty if that meets with your approval.
Okay, different topic, but still me. Thank you very much. So every year, we update the remuneration bylaw, whether it's actually adopted by the board or not. And so traditionally, historically, we've brought it to a committee of the whole where I can get feedback from each of you on proposed changes prior to bringing it to the board at a later board meeting for adoption, consideration of adoption. And so that's where we're at today. This is, this is taking, and just as a reminder, the board chose not to adopt a new remuneration bylaw in twenty twenty-one. So these are changes to the twenty twenty remuneration bylaw that are being proposed. So that's the bylaw still currently in effect. And I thought the easiest way, you know, and I'm happy to take questions whenever, but maybe just walk you through the red line changes in the bylaw and explain what they are. So, you know, to start off with, just changing the referencing, this first section and guiding principles. And I do recommend, there was a report published by U B C M in twenty nineteen around mayor and council and board remuneration and sort of the framework that should be approached in terms of board remuneration or elected official remuneration. And so some of this introductory guiding principles adheres to what's in that report. I do encourage everyone to read it because I think it's informative. So the first section on annual remuneration deals with the chair. There's a stipend, an annual stipend, the chair receives for holding the position of chair. We have generally indexed the pay based on the prior year's CPI each year historically. And so that's what I've done again here. CPI in B C for these purposes in twenty twenty-one amounted to two point eight percent. So that's the rate that's being applied to all of these charges. So that would simply be the increase for chair remuneration and the vice chair remuneration. The other change I've put in here currently, board directors receive an annual remuneration for the mainly scheduled meetings, the regular board meetings and committee of the whole meetings that are scheduled. But they they receive individual pay when they're sitting on committees because different directors may sit on a different number of committees. So the most straightforward way to make sure it's done fairly is to pay them per meeting for those meetings. The current rate right now is a hundred and sixty dollars per meeting. That was last increased in around twenty fifteen, I believe. So it's been about seven years. And I've been watching what the impact cumulatively of CPI would be over because we haven't been indexing that at all. And with my, you know, the idea being that we would sort of do it in ten dollar increments every few years rather than, you know, dealing with pennies or, you know, smaller dollars every year. So cumulatively since twenty fifteen, if we increase that rate to a hundred and seventy, that would be in line if we had been indexing the CPI since then. So that was proposed just to bring that up now that it's sort of at a ten dollar mark. Now, the other piece here, historically, each director has, or each area has a different amount listed for the annual remuneration. And that's chiefly because included in that is remuneration for travel time, traveling to and from meetings. And it's based on the distance each director travels. So it works out to a different amount for each director. If we excluded the travel time from each director's remuneration, every EA director would be paid the same and every municipal director would be paid the same. And what I'm proposing, and if you think about it, prior to twenty twenty, anytime any director attended a meeting, it was always in person. That's how we conducted meetings. So they always incurred the travel time. And so the travel time for those regularly scheduled meetings was an assumption made around the travel time with those associated meetings. And it was averaged out and built into this annual remuneration. It just averaged out over the year and you get it as part of your payment every two weeks. More recently, meetings are being attended quite often by Zoom today, being a good example. And that travel time isn't necessarily being incurred for every meeting. And so what I'm really proposing here, because I think it's the most fair thing to the taxpayers is to pull that out separately from that annual remuneration. So if we separate it out, instead of listing each area with a specific amount, all the electoral area directors would receive the same amount for an annual amount, an annual indemnity, and all municipal directors would receive the same amount. And then the idea being that directors would still be paid for that travel time if and when they're attending a meeting in person. So rather than averaging it out over the year, you'll get paid the annual amount automatically. And then if you attend a meeting in person, the payroll people would know you were here in person and add that travel time component as a payout for that particular meeting. And if you're not attending in person, if you're attending by Zoom and not incurring the travel time, you're paid just the straight time for the meeting itself. And so that kind of simplifies this whole section where really we only need two lines with two numbers rather than a bunch of different ones. And then the next piece down below really deals with that travel time. So I've added this new paragraph. And the reason I had it in a separate paragraph is these two both deal with, other than the chair, directors entitled to. Well, the chair has always had that travel time included in his annual remuneration for regular board meetings and committee of the whole meetings, the same as everyone else. So the idea with this additional paragraph was to just make that clear. So that all directors are entitled to remuneration for time spent in transit when attending regular board meetings and committee of the whole meetings, but only when they attend in person. And the rest of this verbiage really just sort of creates clarity around that. And the rates for that travel time really haven't changed. It's based on distance. It's a dollar amount per however many kilometers. So that's the most significant change. It also impacts alternate directors because, again, we had a It also impacts alternate directors because again, we had a, a specific amount for each area, for each alternate director that was based on what the director was paid for the meeting time and the travel time. Well, again, some alternate directors, if they're attending a meeting, they choose to attend by Zoom. So realistically, they would get paid just the 170 is what's proposed for attending the meeting. And it would specifically say, and in addition, if they attend in person, they receive the travel time indemnity. And if they tend by zoom, they don't. So it, it kind of simplifies this piece in that you, you don't have to have everything listed separately. Um, it's really just, uh, altering a couple of clauses to say, if you attend the meeting, you get paid for the meeting. And if you attend in person, you also get paid for your travel time. And then, um, the other piece that's a little different here, and sometimes it's a little hard to read when it's all, you know, stuff crossed out and so on. But the, the basic gist of this change to section nine. Where this by law provides for reimbursement of expenses, such reimbursement shall be at the level outlined in, in schedule B. That's where the per diem amounts are listed. Historically, those per diem amounts were listed where a meal could be claimed when a director's traveling. For business for the T N R D. Without having to hand in a receipt. So if you're attending a conference, you claim your per diems for the meals you would have been out of pocket for. You're not required to keep all the receipts and hand them in. We historically had never treated that as a maximum that could be actually expensed though. If a meal was being purchased on behalf of the directors, for example, by historically, the C A O might pick up the bill at the conference for the entire table. And he would hand in a receipt. We didn't count heads and say, well, we can only expense the per diem rate per head. We expensed what was on the receipt. Uh, part of the B D O report was to suggest that maybe we should institute an upper limit on what we're, uh, going to charge regardless. And so that's really what this is to say, is to say that, you know, the per diem amounts are going to be listed and they're also going to be treated as a maximum. Now, as far as the board members themselves go, I don't expect you to start handing in receipts. You'd still claim the per diem, but the point being, everyone should just be paying their own way, claiming the per diem. Not expecting somebody else to pick up the bill for the table. And, and, and that's the amount you'll get. And when we get there, I'll show you have actually, uh, proposed an adjustment to the amounts of the per diems to, um, change them slightly. So, so that's that section nine, section 10, uh, kind of again addresses the, uh, traveling to and from the board and, um, each director claiming, uh, um, for that. There's a little bit here on travel allowances. So when we come into this travel and communication allowances. Frankly, I'm just, um, trying to strengthen the wording in here. Again, this is, this is partly, um, you know, some of the recommendations in the B D O report, but also just my general feeling that we've maybe been a little too lenient here where in the past we've allowed directors to, you know, submit a couple of invoices that are sort of indicative of their monthly payments for communication, for example. And, um, and not get a, an invoice for every single month that we're paying them. I think it makes more sense to, to get it's more firmly supported with actual invoices. Um, you know, these are some of the, the increasing expectations on staff, and I think it has to start with the board. In terms of the travel, sometimes it's always said that they are to be submitted on a monthly basis, but quite often directors, uh, only provide them at the end of the year. And I have to say, there have been times when some of the information they provide is a little lacking. It's best guess, uh, on what kilometers were traveled. Um, what I've said here is that they really must be submitted on a monthly basis and that the claims should be supported by a log book or, or, you know, details about the distance traveled, the place, date and purpose of the meetings they're attending. To make sure that we're, you know, fully being accountable for those tax dollars being paid. Now I've got a, an adjustment, um, or revision to the, the expense claim form that I'll show you as well, that, that will help meet that requirement. The, the one other piece in here that's changed that I actually missed on this version, but I was having a discussion. It was actually Director Quinn had pointed it out to me the other day and he's absolutely right. This section here 20B. Um, really should come out. So what it says is where a regular formally scheduled, uh, meeting of the board or committee is predetermined to have directors attend virtually through electronic means. Or one or more individual directors obtain authorization from the chair to attend virtually. Then those directors will be reimbursed as if they were in physical attendance at the meeting. That was put in place several years ago before we started regularly having Zoom attendance and the intent was to have something specific in there that if they weren't attending a meeting in person, they'd still get paid. But now if we're going to be differentiating between the remuneration, if you're there in person and incurring travel time versus attending by Zoom. Um, then remunerated as if they were in physical attendance doesn't really fit the bill anymore. And realistically. This whole section is no longer really being applied as we know that, you know, many directors are attending by Zoom. Um, and they're not necessarily, to my knowledge, getting it pre-approved by the chair every single time. So I think to update this, we just take this section 20 out completely. It's no longer really applicable. And then lastly. I did make a change to this schedule to include regular, uh, meeting of the board. To, to just have it included there to say that the travel time indemnity applies because it's no longer just being assumed. Uh, so it would, it would apply in the case of where it's attended in person. And, um, these are the other pieces I was going to update you on. So in terms of the, the per diem amounts. And I've had some directors in the past say to me that they thought that the amounts we had for individual meals was a little on the low side. Um. I, I've looked a, a bit of a comparison to what other local governments are paying for per diems. Um, to get a sense of how it's working in a comparison. Generally. I found our rates to be, uh, in terms of the, 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 the full day to be a little higher than most of the ones I can compare against. Um, I believe city of Kamloops is, is lower than a hundred dollars. Many of the other ones I looked at. Even some in the lower mainland were lower than a hundred dollars. And nobody was as high as 120, uh, even in the lower mainland. But they did tend to have, uh, higher amounts per meal. And so what I'm proposing here is essentially match what the Columbia Shishwap Regional District has, it seems to be working well for them. So essentially we take out the daily amount and we just have a higher amount for breakfast, lunch and dinner. This would add up to eighty dollars locally or a hundred dollars in the lower mainland. So it's a slight decrease in the total. It could be claimed, um, if you're attending a conference in the lower mainland. But if you're, if you're claiming a per diem for lunch, for, uh, you know, attending a, a meeting. Um, and you're just claiming the lunch instead of eighteen dollars, you'd get twenty five dollars. And I think on the whole, on balance, it balances out. When I ran it through a few different scenarios. Uh, it, it kind of balances out. So the directors aren't really receiving a significant decrease just because we've decreased this to eighty or a hundred. And it, it actually draws a more straight line and I'll show you what I mean by that. If I pull up. Or maybe I want the Excel spreadsheet. Yeah, okay. Hey, can everyone see that Excel spreadsheet? This again was suggested to me by our, our payroll staff as something that was being used at the Columbia Shishwap Regional District that seemed to work well for them. So we, you know, we have the advantage. It's been vetted and tested there. And the directors there seem to like it. It's, it, this would be in lieu of the regular sheet you're used to filling out. And, um, a couple of advantages. What it essentially has is one meeting per, per row. So you can fit multiple meetings in one sheet. So rather than filling out one sheet per meeting and, and having a, a big stack of, of, uh, different pieces of paper. Uh, you could, you could essentially submit this monthly. And the idea, and I've filled in some, some sample data here, but you'd have the date and, uh, the description of the meeting or purpose. If, for example, you were attending a meeting, maybe budget meeting in the electoral area, you could, you know, write that in. So just like on the current sheet, if you're claiming kilometers for, um, for travel, you'd fill in the number of kilometers there and it's automatically going to calculate it for you. If I changed this to 120 kilometers, it would automatically do the math. Um, if you had a hotel or private accommodation, you could fill in the amount there. Um, private accommodation would be a per diem rate, but i- if you, it's a hotel, you'd attach a receipt. Most times for board directors, if it's a hotel, it's being booked on your behalf and the bill's being paid by the T N R D directly. But if you had an occasion where you were paying something, uh, you'd fill it in there. Your communication expenses, um, there's space for you to, to fill in there. Uh, and that's where if you're going to be submitting a, a phone bill or something like that on a monthly basis, you could just, you know, fill in the amount, attach the receipt and, and submit it as part of this overall sheet. Other expenses kind of fills that other gap. And there's another expenses piece on the sheet today. So this would work the same way. You would just, you know, if it's a hundred dollars for something, you'd fill that in there and you'd attach the receipts. You could, uh, include a description on the receipt itself. Um, sorry, I've got that in my own column, but it's the same idea. Um, currently on our sheet, we've got the Advisory Planning Commission social, there's the ability to claim seventy five dollars for that. So I can go in there. Now the meal per diems. If this was a hard copy, it could be printed on the second page. Or if you're using this as the electronic version, it would just be on the second tab. Now you've got a nice worksheet to kind of fill in what you're doing and the way this would work, I think it will simplify directors claiming meal per diems because what we were doing before. If you were traveling, for instance, and you claim the daily rate a hundred dollars. And then you'd be deducting meals that you were provided. So if you went to a conference and you were claiming a hundred dollars and they provided breakfast and lunch, you'd be deducting the breakfast and lunch from that hundred dollars. It can get confusing for people as to which lunches pertain to which day and so on. So we're kind of doing away with claiming a daily rate and you're just claiming individual meals. So the way it's laid out is you've got, you know, seven days for the week here. So in this case. You would fill in the name of the meeting that would correspond to the front of the sheet. The other tab, the date and time of departure and the date and time of return. So if you were, you know, staying overnight Thursday night and attending a meal on Friday, uh, a meeting on Friday. And so you arrived at, you know, you left at three in the afternoon and you bought dinner. You can just bowl dinner or you could circle it on a hard copy, but you're essentially just identifying, I, I bought a dinner. It was out of pocket for dinner. And it was out of pocket for breakfast and lunch the next day. Those are the three meals I need to be reimbursed for. So, you know, if it was over a week, you might have multiple breakfasts or multiple lunch, but you just tally them up here and say, well, I've got one breakfast, one lunch, one dinner. And it's automatically going to apply the rates zone one being, you know, outside the lower mainland. And it's going to calculate what your claim is. So if you actually had, you know, three lunches. It's automatically going to apply three lunches. If you're in the lower mainland, you use the zone two rates. So maybe you, you had a lunch in lower mainland for a meeting. It's going to apply it there. You've got a, a summary. If you had multiple meetings that you're claiming for. Or maybe you had something that lasted more than one week, uh, you'd go down to the next rows. It's going to summarize it here and it's going to carry it forward to, uh, the meal per diem, uh, amount on here. And then it's going to total up, you know, for each meeting, your expenses for that meeting. And total up, you've had multiple meetings. You're going to have a grand total down here and you're going to have to sign off. So it works very much similar to the existing. Uh, form in a way. But it allows for multiple meetings. Or if you've got a meeting and some communication expenses to claim or some electoral area travel to claim. It can all go on one sheet. And I think it actually will be a little simpler for directors once they get used to it. And certainly having this kind of worksheet and, and, and getting away from that sort of daily per diem and just claiming for the individual meals. And now with the rates we have in the bylaw, when you add up breakfast, lunch and dinner, it adds up to the daily total. So there's no incidentals to claim or anything of that nature. Um, you're really just saying which meals was I out of pocket for when I was traveling. And if you had other personal expenses when you were traveling, maybe you had to pay for parking or, um, uh, you know, crossing on the ferry, going to the island, those could be claimed other, other expenses you would attach the receipt. And those could still be claimed there. So I think it, I think it will simplify things. So that's really the last piece I had to present, uh, and the idea would be this form would then kind of, um, roll in to use when the remuneration by law gets adopted. Well, and one last thing I point out is simply the, the vehicle rate per kilometer. We always match what CRA publishes as their rate. Um, and it's increased this year to 61 cents per kilometer. So we would include that as well.
Okay, um, did, uh, did people wish to take a break at this point? I did say 10:30 is 10:35 now, or do you want to plow on through? Want a break, Director Elliot? Nobody seems keen on the break, so I guess we'll continue on. Uh, do I have Director Rothenberger, Director Kershaw, Director Schaefer and Director Quinn?
Thanks, Jerry. I really like the look of, of this, the way, uh, Mr. Ray has, has outlined it particularly on the per diems. And it's good that you point out that the per diems have not been a maximum because I think the public's impression has been that that is a maximum or should be. And some of the feedback we've received as well. You, you've broken your own policy, your own threshold here, here and here. Uh, when in fact, um, it, it has not been an actual maximum and I think there should be a maximum applied. I think that's, that's a good thing to do. And so I like, I like the look of that. I, um, I have a question about hotels. It's very difficult, I know, to, to put rates on hotels because of the the way the, uh, room rates fluctuate and, and the way hotels may or may not be available. There's always a limited supply of block bookings for a conference, for example. And, uh, but I, I think we should maybe noodle that a little bit possibly in the policy committee to see if there is something that can be done there. But my question is really, uh, with respect to the Zoom meetings, uh, versus in person and the travel allowance. I don't know that we've had a thorough discussion of that. Is there an assumption that going forward? Zoom meetings will always be an option for any reason. Uh, ju- for convenience, for example, this morning I was getting up and doing my chores and I thought, oh crap, I'm, I'm running a bit late. Maybe I'll just phone it in, you know, and, and zoom it. And that, no, I'm committed to going in person and, and certainly in-person meetings are preferable. So uh, got things in gear and, and got here in time for the meeting, but is, is the feeling that beyond COVID that Zoom is always going to be a choice here on in. Um, I'm curious about that because if it's not, and if, if we're going to put strict criteria on when we consume and when not, then I, I'm not sure that the way that's been presented, uh, is, is going to, uh, be the best.
So you anticipated my question, Director Rothenberger. I have written here, are we now assuming that the Zoom option is a permanent thing, uh, Mr. Ray? Uh, because I don't think that the board has ever really discussed that in detail.
I'm, I'm not trying to make any assumptions. I'm just looking at what the reality is today. You know, we haven't rushed into making a change. It certainly seems to be a reality that's going to be ongoing for at least a little while. And, um, you know, there's always questions of harsh winter weather and long travel. Um, you know, this year we even ran into highways that were, you know, flooded out and, and sometimes in-person attendance simply wasn't an option. So I, I don't know now that everyone's kind of used to the Zoom or similar technology that we would necessarily shut the door on it. But that's not really my decision. I'm, I'm reacting to what I foresee being the, at least the short-term reality. That's not my decision.
Okay, Director Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I I like this, everything you have proposed, but I have quite questions on your expense claim sheets. You said they would automatically, are we going to receive these in paper or are they going to be online if we fill them out online?
It could be made available either way. I anticipate, you know, this is, this is a an Excel spreadsheet. I think most people have access to Excel. We could create it as a PDF. But certainly Excel offers some advantages over PDF in terms of some of the calculation formulas and stuff. It it is locked down, so you can fill in the cells that you want to fill in. But if I wanted to, you know, delete something else, it's not going to let me do it. So you're not going to be able to mess it up. But it could just as easily be printed out and things filled in by hand.
Okay, it'll be online, because totally now with the with this record that we have right now, we have no copy for ourselves. So we, when we get paid, we have no idea. And I don't tally it myself, I'm not a very good bookkeeper, I just take what comes and and cry about what they delete on me. But it's, I like this, so if we can do it online or we can print that off and it'll be available online. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Schaefer.
On when you, when you were doing the presentation here, you said a logbook and it says in here a logbook, is this considered a logbook?
It could be either or. If you're listing out meeting by meeting and this, that serves as a logbook, you're giving me the same information in the same kind of format. If you wanted to keep a separate logbook, an actual logbook, separate from this, you could provide me with copies of that. But the the point would be the sort of the level of detail. Right now, I'm not always getting even information on a per meeting basis.
Thank you, Director Quinn.
Thank you. Should we leave the APC in? I think we sort of temporarily disbanded them. Will there be a need for that? Or are we going to come back at a little later date? So should we just leave that in as a question? It's suspended, that's a term, thank you. I just asked me, I don't know. The other thing is
They've have, they have been suspended, I think, for the balance of this electoral term. If I understand, if I recall correctly, is that right, Ms. Campbell?
That's correct, Triculus. I would recommend perhaps just leaving it out for now until such time that we revisit the APCs.
I left it in simply because it's in the current form, but I can easily take it out.
Okay, the second question I've got to ask is that whenever I need a hotel or a airfare or something, I phone Katie. And I never see the bill, my rate on my expense or paid. So do that does the who's going to punch that, where's that number going to come from to the director, who's going to fill the hole in? Or will you fill it in when you get it?
If you're not out of pocket for the cost, you're not submitting a claim for it, so it doesn't really need to appear on here. Right? If you've, if you've come to town and you need to stay overnight and you phone Katie and she's booked a hotel room and they're billing the T N R D directly. We get an invoice from them and has your name on it as the room occupant. And we know how to account for it properly, we we pay the hotel directly. This is really for you to get a claim to be reimbursed for costs that you're out of pocket for. So if you're paying the hotel bill, you can put it in there. If you're not paying for it, it doesn't need to be on here at all.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's still a cost to the director for X, Y, Z meetings. And I'm just wondering if that needs to be there, but if the board pays it and we're all comfortable with that, fine. And then the last question is, I think somebody addressed it, is this can be posted on the net? That discussion has happened around this table, you know, why aren't we putting our expenses on like MPs and MLAs do? Will this enable us to do that?
You're talking about transparency of recording and and actually just publish these, the publishing these on the on the website, for example. It could be done, it's it's a question of policy.
You know, something just maybe you have something I don't have a problem with it. Yes. But it's, I I know it has been discussed number of times, that should it be on the net to be transparent and a little mine anytime, but there it is, if people want to know. The reason I natter about that is because I usually have the highest, because I've got the furthest to go.
Yeah, the other thing I could add here, you know, honestly, there's some room below this this piece. I could add a section here for notes that, you know, if if you had notes you wanted to fill in to provide some context to anything, you'd have an opportunity to write some some notes to help in that, I could add some space for that.
That's fine, I just wondered, are we going to be able to post it on the net, so it's available to the public? That's that's all, thank you.
Director Elliott, then Director Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the per diem. While we're away, our conference, we have that extra, about a hundred dollars. Even if you did two or three meals that were provided for you, you still ended up with maybe twenty dollars at the end of the time. As a general rule, that's where we got an happy or we bought a beer or whatever. So what you're doing is eliminating that?
In a sense, if I go back here, previously, we had lower amounts for breakfast, lunch and dinner. So you're right, if you were claiming a hundred dollars, there was a piece there that wasn't accounted for by breakfast, lunch or dinner. What we've done is increased the amounts for breakfast, lunch and dinner. So that you're getting more, but it's going to add up to a lower daily total. So you're right, we're eliminating a a piece of what we used to call incidentals.
So if I go out for breakfast and whatever you've got on here, it's how much, it was going to be how much? If I, okay, if it's going to be twenty bucks and I only pay ten, am I only getting paid for ten or am I getting paid for twenty?
You get paid the per diem amount.
So that which, okay.
Whether you spend less or spend more, it's simple, because you just claim the per diem, no receipts are needed. So I think overall, it kind of balances out. The rates previously were seventeen dollars for breakfast, eighteen dollars for lunch, so and twenty nine dollars for supper. So if you were to, let's say, you know, claim, claim those three meals, you're getting, you know, slightly less than if you're claiming a hundred dollars, but you're getting more than if you're just claiming some of those meals directly. And it's really for me about a, I I found that a lot of directors were confused by the process to how to make those claims. And in terms of trying to explain it to the public, this is just the most simple, direct line. You know, the the director was out of pocket for a meal, we're reimbursing them for that meal. Forget about a daily rate or any other kinds of things that confuses things. You're getting a fair amount for breakfast, lunch and dinner. And I think that's the easiest way to be able to explain it to people. And the easiest way for people to understand what they should be claiming.
Okay, I have Directors Schaefer, O'Reilly and Sinclair, Director Schaefer.
I have a problem like, well, we, every year we put on there what each director earns and what their expenses were. Why do we have to put every little thing on there and do it? It's miles too much as far as I'm concerned. Just just put on there what we earn every year and it's on there anyway, so people can see it. And if they have questions, they can question you.
Ms. Ms. Campbell.
You're the chaired Director Schaefer, I I just wanted to offer a comment on that. I think part of this, you know, aligns with our goal of increased transparency for the public. So I I can tell you that your per diem forms have all been requested by members of the public, by members of the media. And it has been extremely difficult to try and explain some of the information that's been filled out in these forums. It takes a lot of staff time. We have to refer them to Doug, refer them to finance. So I I can anticipate that after, you know, everything we've been through over the last year or so, that we will continue to get requests related to the board's expenses and staff's expenses. So I think if we're proactive, I believe it'll probably take us less time to just proactively put some of this financial information out there rather than wait for it to get requested.
Thank you, Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As much as it seems like, you know, we're we're moving forward from where we have been. I still feel like doing this, we'd still be way behind where we should be this day and age. And I'm wondering if there's maybe just the opportunity for staff to have an area in the backend where directors can log in and have an on online portal rather than, again, Excel spreadsheet seems so elementary to me nowadays. And in the sense of people, if they were FOI'd, it's very easy for staff to just run a report if we have a portal built. And I'm just wondering if that's the direction that we ultimately should be going, rather than this kind of being almost outdated, even though we're trying to get ahead.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I mean, anything's possible with time and money. It it's, it is possible, we haven't received necessarily direction to do that. And and it is something that can be discussed for sure. I like the idea of directors being able to just go in and enter something directly into like a web-based portal. But I also have to keep in mind, not all directors have reliable internet or cellphone or what have you, sometimes it's it's a bit patchy. And so I I need to kind of keep it basic for for some some of those directors who who might find that difficult.
Yeah, and and I certainly respect that in the same, in the same breath of you're, you know, trying to get twenty six directors to make sure their Excel is up to date and it's licensed and do they do it in online Excel? Like it, there's complications both ways. But a portal just seems like moving to the twenty first century and it would just make it a lot easier for staff when an FOI report is being pulled, as Ms. Campbell said, it's likely to stay, to keep coming. It just seems, yeah, I I just, this just seems elementary to me, that we should be looking to more advanced solution, but thank you for this.
Thank you, Director Sinclair.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mr. Ray. I I'm definitely in favor of eliminating the overnight per diem and the travel time adjustments, I think are good as well. I I understand that Zoom is not quite the same as in person, however, due to weather, people are traveling from throughout the region. I myself have other jobs and Zoom participation makes my life a lot easier. And we're also saving the taxpayers money. I I think that Zoom is used by many organizations and it's here to stay. I am not, however, in favor of increasing the annual and per meeting indemnities at this point in time. So I'd like to move that we freeze the indemnities for another year.
I don't hear a second, does somebody go to second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Mr. Mr. Ray, then Director Rothenberger.
Sorry, this is really a discussion for the committee, not for me, but the one thing I just wanted to remind directors of is and and certainly this is, this is a completely valid option. Every few years, we do a comparison of what the directory remuneration is here to other regional districts. We don't do it every year. Generally, we've had that CPI increase built in, so that there's some kind of third-party kind of number that we could just attach that to, so that the board doesn't necessarily have to put a lot of thought into their own remuneration, which can be tricky. But every few years, we do a review compared to neighboring regional districts. And the strategy has for decades been try to be, you know, at the average, neither lead nor lag, right? And again, I I encourage people to read that document published by U B C M around board remuneration and some of the important sort of foundational principles, why it's important. My fear, or at least my my, not so much fear, but just to to sort of bring awareness to it. This would be the second year that we would have foregone any kind of increase. And I I believe what will happen is we'll get to a point where we do that comparison to neighboring regional districts and find that we're no longer at the average, that we're now lagging. And then the board of the day will be faced with, do we alter our strategy and suggest that we should be the, you know, the paid lower than everyone else? Or should we have to have some kind of a catch-up to get back to the average? And so I just wanted to put that thought out in terms of the the sort of longer-term consideration for future boards and so on. As opposed to just looking at it as a as a one-time thought.
Thanks, Mr. Ray, Director Rothenberger, can we speak to this motion?
Yes. My concern might be, I I and I'm certainly in in favor of holding the line on indemnities. But if the proposal is to simply leave it as the status quo, at least make that recommendation to the board, that I assume precludes the changes that Mr. Ray is is suggesting with respect to a leveling of the of the indemnities for for members of the board. And that would concern me, so that we'd be putting off any of those types of changes for a year. Secondly, I really hope we aren't going backwards on transparency. I'm a little bit nervous about some of the comments here today, that maybe we're, we are 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 thinking is that we're going in the direction of too much transparency. I I don't think we can do that. When I suggested those quarterly reports a year ago, there was, there was pretty much, I I think unanimous agreement that that was a good thing to do and we're just waiting for a way of doing it. And I, my expectation was that at the next policy committee, we'd probably be receiving some kind of report on that as to how and when that's going to happen. So I hope that remains the course and we aren't going to reverse that. So so if I could get a response to my question about the, you know, the the impact of freezing indemnities for another year.
Would you be looking to Mr. Ray for for response to that question?
More so to the mover, if that was the intention, that that to to in effect shelf the proposals that we're hearing today.
Thank you, I would like to see some of these changes implemented, such as the removal of the overnight per diem and the others that have been discussed, but to not have the changes about the indemnities implemented. So I would ask Mr. Ray, is that possible to implement some of these changes to the bylaw you proposed, but not others?
Yes, I mean, I could, I could bring forward the new bylaws substantially as what you see here today. But where I've adjusted any of the remuneration rates based on CPI, I could remove those adjustments. So that the the annual indemnity, we'd still pull out the the travel indemnity separately. But the the rest of it that we've applied a CPI increase to, we could just simply change those numbers so that increase doesn't happen.
Does that answer your question, Director Rothenberger?
I think it does. So in other words, we could, we could carry on with Mr. Ray's proposal without increasing the actual overall indemnities. He would simply apply the CPI and and do the averaging as proposed, that's possible to do. Okay, because then I'm in favor of the motion, otherwise I've got a problem.
Well, I I hope I understand correctly. So the the regular stipend that is increased by the CPI index annually and always have Mr. Ray said it's been done that way for decades, that would, that would continue, that CPI increase would be applied to the annual stipend that directors receive, is that correct, Mr. Ray?
What I'm hearing from the suggestion is that we would incorporate all of the changes suggested. But rather than having a an increase to the annual CPI, you know, or the the annual indemnity by a CPI amount, we would simply not implement that increase. So the the numbers you would see would be decreased back to what they would have been had CPI not been applied. But all the other changes would would apply. But all the other changes would, would apply.
Okay, I have, uh, Directors Duty, Watson and Quinn, Director Duty.
Thank you, Chair, just to, um, just to kind of clarify something in my mind with respect to process. My understanding is, is that we're not here today to make any particular decision, so. A motion, while I would support this motion, is actually something that should be reserved for a future board meeting where we can actually make that. That determination, so right now, my understanding is, is that we're just offering direction to our CFO. To come back with something that would indicate this, is that right?
I, I think that's correct, is that how you interpreted it, Mr. Ray?
Yeah.
Director Watson.
Thank you, the CPI actually is, it doesn't go back decades. There was a time when you, you and I were elected in two thousand and two. Um, that I think we got paid seven thousand dollars a year. Uh, getting an increase out of that was, um, really newsworthy. Uh, and not a pretty sight. Uh, that being said, uh. I, I know that, um, the CPI index. Works out very well and all that, but raises go to. People who are doing good work. And, uh, lately, the public has noticed we haven't been doing good work. And I would say that we don't deserve a raise.
Director Quinn.
The suggestion to the Chair to Director Sinclair, I'm now completely confused over what we're talking about. Are we talking about? We're, we're not increasing the one sixty per day to one seventy, or are we talking about all the stuff in there?
Uh, because, Ray, I, my understanding is we're talking about all, uh. The stipends.
Yeah, that was my understanding, that the, the one seventy would remain at one sixty and the annual indemnities would re. Remain what they would have been at CPI, not been, uh, applied. But all the other proposed changes in terms of the per diems and, and the rest of the language in the proposed bylaw would remain.
Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. The CPI indexing has happened every year, that's one of the reasons what we have not done the. Uh, increases to anything, just simply because it was an easy way to handle. Any kind of increase and didn't get us behind anything, so I'm totally supportive of that. But I haven't. Come to the conclusion that we have done a really bad job. We might have some ups and downs on, on this board, but I am going to tell you that in my area. My people are quite happy with what the services that they're getting and the things that we are doing. And I'm tired of hearing how bad we are. We are not that, we had a, a, a little bump in the system, fine, we did. But quit hiding behind it, take your lumps and go ahead. And making this transparent is wonderful, but why should we not have some increases? And I'm not going to support that motion.
Uh, Director Roden.
Thank you, Chair Gillis, um, I'm not opposed to Director Sinclair's proposal, I just will play devil's advocate or just note here. That by freezing everything, we are leaving the next board in the unenviable position. Of not only being a new board with very little experience. But having to deal with the fact that they will now be two years behind. Um, and the optics of leaving it for another year mean they will be three years behind, the optics of voting themselves a raise. Will mean they will have had their feet under the table for three months and they're voting themselves a raise already. So, just pointing that out as a reality that the next board will face.
Uh, Director Schaefer and then Director Rothenberger.
Um, I am in favor of the hundred and sixty remaining for another year. But I'm not in favor of the other part of this, so I will be voting against it. And I also say that the people in my area are quite satisfied with what I'm doing and, and what the TNRD is doing, so. I don't think we should take a bunch of everything.
Thank you, Director Rothenberger.
Who says the next board has to catch up? What are we catching up to? Um, you know, if, if, uh, if what we receive and pay is fair. Why would we necessarily be chasing what everybody else is doing? Uh, in order, you refer to the next board, I, I don't know that the next board in any kind of difficult position at all. Uh, you know, either they're, they're getting paid fairly or not, never mind what everybody else is getting.
Director Kershaw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the motion, the, the Director Watson said that we're being penalized because we're doing a bad job. That's why we're not taking an increase, so we're also penalizing the, the next council because we know they're going to do a bad job too. So, that's the other way of looking at it.
Director Quinn.
Thank you, I like the format for, for the, uh, expense thing, it makes it transparent. Um, it should almost eliminate need for FOIs on that particular issue, um, because it'll all be there. And I certainly hope the press takes note of that. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask and would like to do before, we know price of gas is going to go up eleven cents a liter and first of April. For the new carbon tax, uh, does this have the ability to change it at that time, I guess that question for Mr. Ray.
Well, it's a bylaws, it can be amended by the board. You know, at any time, but keep in mind, it gets built into the budget and supported with property taxes we collect, so. If you decide to, uh, you know, not implement an increase. It makes it harder to implement a, a amendment to the bylaw later if we haven't anticipated it in the budget. Although it's, it's relatively small, so it could be absurd.
Uh, but that's, so CRA, we base our mileage rates on CRA. Numbers, so if they change it, say in May, because they jacked it up, it's just a minor amendment.
Yeah, and, and frankly, they only ever seem to change it once a year at the very end of the year, sort of in January for each year. That's all I've ever seen. Okay, just asking, thank you.
Thank you, is that, are there any, is there any further discussion with respect to Director Sinclair's motion? Director Elliott.
I'm sorry, I was out of the room, could I have the motion? Could I have it read in its entirety?
Would you like me to jump in here? Go ahead, Director, oh, sorry, Chair, I'll turn to you.
Uh, Director Sinclair, did you want to, um, repeat your motion, please?
Um, sure, so the current motion, uh, based on the current motion. My motion is that the committee of the whole recommend that at its next regular meeting, the board consider adoption. Of the revised Board of Directors Remuneration and Expense Bylaw Number Two Seven Seven One. Twenty twenty-two, with the exception of annual and per meeting indemnity increases.
Thanks, Director Sinclair, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Chair Gillis, I'm going to say out the names for the benefit of the recording secretary, if that's okay. We have Director Rothenberger in favor, Director Watson, Director Duty in the room. On screen, we have Director Sinclair, Director O'Reilly, Director Rain, Director Talarico and Director Rice.
And those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. I guess we have to name those, don't we? Director Crowe, Director Schaefer, Director Elliott, Director Graham. Director Christopherson, Director Smith, Director Polderman, Director Quinn, Director Kershaw, Director. Uh, Roden. And Director Christian. Is there any other hands up on the screen, none other on the screen, then, and, and, uh, and Director Gillis? So how, how many does that tally up to, uh, Ms. Campbell?
I'm going to ask our recording secretary to tally that, I mean, she can.
Yep.
Twelve.
And how many of us are? Present today?
There's twenty, Director Stamer is away, I believe. Um, do we have alternate Director Hunter or Director Bass today? No, so we've only got twenty. Only got twenty-four, how many do we have in favor, Olivia? Yeah. Oh, did we have, do we have Director Swan? Oh no, we don't have Director Swan, so now we have twenty-three. Okay, so I believe that does, that, is it, um. We, we have twelve that are opposed, we have twenty-three, so I think a motion fails, if I'm doing my math correctly, Friday. Somebody else want to confirm that?
Can you move your microphone a bit closer, please?
We have twenty-three, twenty-three directors here today, so we have twelve, uh, opposed, so I believe that that fails.
Point of order, Ms. Director Chair, uh, Director Blackwell did not participate in the vote, but he is in attendance. Just in case, uh, Ms. Campbell's snuffers didn't add up.
Who are we, who else are we missing? Director Blackwell, are you there, did you want to? Okay, well, now we've got twenty-one directors, twelve opposed. So the motion, I'll let you declare that, Chair.
So we have, um. A recommendation. Sorry. Director Schaefer.
Can I make a recommendation that we speak to the board that only the hundred and sixty stays the same and the rest is increased? No, that included the other parts, I just want the hundred and sixty.
So. If I hear you correctly, are you, are you saying that only the committee meeting remuneration?
Be changed, to be, stay the same.
Stay the same and the rest of the report. Should, should be adopted as written.
Yeah.
Moved and seconded, Director, uh, Rothenberger.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't think that's a valid motion, that would have had to be presented as an amendment to the original motion in order to be, in order.
It could have been presented, clearly could have been presented.
It should have been, I don't know that it can be presented after the fact, get a ruling on that one.
Director Rothenberger would be correct. Just, just so the board's aware that this is going to come back, uh, to the board to vote on at the, the next regular board meeting. And so you will have another opportunity to provide additional feedback to Mr. Ray on the bylaw, once it's been read, uh, two times. Um, prior to third reading, so if you have further, further changes that you want to see, um, we can address that at the next board meeting.
Exactly, so really all we have here is a recommendation to the board coming forward. And there is a recommendation, is there any further discussion with respect to the, uh, remuneration bylaw, proposed changes? I'm seeing none, then, all in favor of the recommendation? Is anyone opposed? I have Director Sinclair, uh, Director. Rain, Director Talarico. No, hand is not up, I'm sorry, Director Rice.
Rain and Watson.
Okay. And that's, you've heard that, I presume, okay? That takes us to the discretionary funds in election year, item three point three. Uh, Mr. Ray.
Thanks, everyone, this one is, uh, going to be very quick. Yeah. Okay, so now I just want to. This was just a really quick reminder, seeing as it's an election year, the election coming this fall. Uh, for the electoral area directors, uh, this is the policy around the discretionary funds. And there is a section in here, which I'm sure you've reread since it was on the agenda. That notwithstanding section two of this policy for the period beginning the first day in which nomination papers are made available prior to an election date. Re-elected officials of the regional district and ending immediately following the earlier of. Either the election date or acclamation, requests for grants under the discretionary funds. Of two hundred and fifty dollars or greater must be approved by motion of the Board of Directors, so that's. That's an exception to how it usually works during that election period, and I just simply wanted to remind electoral area directors of that. So they can plan accordingly.
Thanks, Mr. Ray. There is a recommendation that that be received for information only? Moved. Go here a second or? Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? I hope not. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? I see no one opposed, that's carried. So then item number four is a, one that many of them looking forward to, it's called adjournment. Thanks, Director Polderman, we stand adjourned.